Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of July 25. I just want to ask, is there any representative from the Arcade Company that's on our agenda this evening? Okay. All righty. My name is Mike Sheehan. I'm the chairman of the zoning board. Serving tonight are our regular members, Mary Kate Daly, Shannon Greenwell, Rachel Churchill, and Al Bora. I'd ask everyone at this time to turn off all electronic devices, please. And the format for the meeting, I will ask the proponent, the applicant, to appear before us, give us a name and address for the record. If you're representing someone, your name and address and who you're representing. The applicant will give an opportunity to present what they're proposing. During that period, the board can ask questions either while they're proposing, when they're finished, and at the very end. After the board has questions, concerns with the proposal, then we'll ask if there's any elected officials or appointed officials, either on Zoom, go to meeting, or here to speak, and then we'll open up to the public. Anyone that wants to come up and speak upon the matter, please state your name and address for the record. And at that point, the final word will give to the applicant to present their case. And then we'll either move to close the public hearing and go into deliberations. We could continue it. We could close the public hearing and then put our vote off to another date, but that's how the process goes. This meeting is being recorded by NCM and by GoToMeeting. Okay. First item this evening is case number 23-1857 Hickory Road. It's a special permit. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on July 25, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Paul Jodas on behalf of Edward and Jennifer Burke regarding property located at 57 Hickory Road, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the single-residence zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood. It will be available for remote petition via Google Meet. The application requests a special permit under zoning bylaw section of 5.4 and 5.4.3 to construct in addition to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family resident that increases the floor area above the maximum 25% allowed by right. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing CPED@norwoodMA.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Could you state your name and address for the record? If you want to stand at the podium, that's fine.
My name is Paul Jodas from Jodas &amp; Sons. I'm representing Edward and Jennifer Burke at 57 Hickory.
Good evening, sir.
The pre-existing nonconforming property has setbacks on the right side of the building at 7 feet and 90.9 feet on the left side. We propose to go straight up, and going straight up would be encroaching on the setbacks, or the 15-foot setbacks, in the single-residence zone, where the front porch that we propose to do would be done by right, the 20-foot setback from the street. That's only one story. What's bringing us here is that we want to go up a level, and when we go up a level, we're now violating, continuing the violation of the setbacks. We're looking for a relief of being able to go up, increase the size of the house, not making it any more microfiling than it already is. We just want to just go straight up from where we are. The little additions on the back meet the setback if we could do by right, if this was to stay a single story. So what really brings us here is the fact that we want to go two stories, which is something that's previous to nonconforming.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the board, Al?
Yes, but the addition, because you're going to second floor, and also, if I read this correctly, attic?
We're going to not do the attic. The attic was within the roof. We were going to make the attic, we were going to make the attic area a half of a room.
That's true. It shows on your plan.
All right. We're now reciting that.
With the roof area, I'm sorry, the attic area removed, what is the total square feet going to be of the property?
And you're talking about over 25%?
How much over the 25%?
I don't have that right now, but I can do a quick calculation, because it's, for all intents and purposes, we're pre-are doubling what's there now. So it is basically 100%, you know, for the, with what we have. So the footprint going up a level is going to be increased exactly the same, so it's a 100%.
And that number would be?
Oh, I don't have that number right now.
Well, I think that's kind of important, if we're looking for excess of 25% of the total.
So we're going up, the existing is 2,400 square feet, 1,200 square feet, we're going up another 1,200 on the second floor.
So you get a total of 2,400.
Right.
So you have 100% over. Also, I'd like to see a plan, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see a plan that shows the removal of the attic space rather than approve what's in front of us tonight.
Okay.
The submission of A1 through A8. If you look at A6, I mean, D6 on the plans, do you have D6?
I don't.
Yeah.
That dorm is getting removed. Okay? And that's all that's changed. Instead of having a stairway going up over the existing stairway?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Just going to, but you're going to still advance.
So what is it? Can we show? Yeah, okay. If you wouldn't mind just pointing out, Peril put it here on the screen.
Nothing else has changed, except that that is getting removed.
The dormer?
The dormer.
Yeah.
And that was a stairway going up over the stairway to get to the attic. That dormer was needed in order to be allowed the headroom required for the code requirements to get up to the attic. Since we're not going to have that as a habitable space, we're removing that dormer.
And what's it going to be, a pull-down?
A pull-down.
Pull-down stairway? Yeah. Well, you hit that up there. What's the elevation that you're going to? Because we have a 30.
It doesn't exceed the 30. It's like 25 feet.
Doesn't exceed it? Yeah. Al, anything else?
And I brought these to Paul Coell.
Yep. Okay.
On the application, the building inspector shows evaluation of the work to be done is only $500.
We had to submit a building permit in order for it to get, in order for it to get rejected.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So you're looking for us to accept this $500 gift?
No, no. It would be a refile. If this goes to go forward, then we have to refile the building permit?
Okay.
Then an accurate number would have to go a hundred percent above. Okay. But Paul would never accept that. Okay. Thank you. I'm good, Mike.
Okay. Thank you, Al. Rachel?
In addition to that question, and this might be a question for Ms. Dixon, the stairs leading from, or to the porch in front, because that's within the setback, do stairs count as a setback? Okay, that was my only question in addition to what's been asked. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheehan?
I don't have anything additional to what was already asked.
Yeah.
Nothing additional, same question as my colleagues.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the evaluations I was by there earlier this evening, and it seems to be, you know, what I always call those middle finger splits, the ranches that were built there back in the 50s and 60s, and many of them have had the second story added, so it would conform, in my opinion, with what's going on in that neighborhood. Okay, sir, you may have a seat, and we'll open the hearing up. Is there anyone here, appointed or elected official, here at GoToMeeting, that would like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay. You don't have anything else to add, do you, sir? No? And you folks are the homeowners?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome. Okay. Does the board have any more questions? And if not, we can move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved to close the public hearing by Mary Kate, seconded by Shannon. Al, on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? We do have some requirements regarding the special permit, a decision criteria. We can talk about the, obviously, the social, economic, community needs. I believe this would be more beneficial, and serves the needs and the interest of the local homeowners, who hopefully will stay here for a long time. There wasn't any, I don't think, any adverse effect in the circulation. It's still a single-family home. There's no public, the public services are already provided. I don't see any environmental impact, and it's, as I said earlier, it does conform what's going on down in that neighborhood, compatibility. You see some of these houses that have had the second story along that Sycamore and that Spruce and that Hickory.
That would be the tree streets, sir?
The tree streets, yeah. That's the tree streets, yeah, right off of Winter. Yeah. And visually compatibility, as I said, it will fit in with some of them. There are some positive benefits for the town and the increase of the tax revenue. And so, what are the wishes of the board? I think we meet the criteria. Are there any, is there a motion?
Moved to approve the special permit as presented.
Yep. The Mary Kate has moved to approve as presented. Is there a second?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
On that, regarding a revised print?
Yep.
Condition of?
Yep. And you would like the revised print of the...
Of the second floor, the attic area.
With the dormer removed, so when you go to the building inspector, give them an updated print, and then I'll also align that condition. We'll put a condition that the attic is to be used for storage only and no livable, no livable area there. And it will be a pull-down attic. Yeah, no habitable space. Okay. Is that fine, Al?
Yes.
Okay. So as amended, has been moved?
Second.
Second by Shannon.
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon? Mary Kate?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. Good luck, folks. Wish you all the best. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business, we're going to take, we're going to take 111 Lennox Street. Next is the proponent here. Okay. You're here, let me read the public hearing on 111 Lennox Street. I have it here somewhere. Okay. Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on July 25, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of David. Forgive me if I...
Klevenoff.
Klevenoff. Thank you, sir. Ask why I'm representing Thrive Pet Healthcare regarding property located at 111 Lennox Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general business zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit for use under zoning bylaw section 3.1.5 F9 to operate a veterinary clinic business. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing CPED@norwoodMA.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Good evening, sir. If you wouldn't mind announcing your name and address again for the record?
Sure. My name's David Klevenoff. I'm with Gilman McLaughlin, Hammerhand. We are on Merrimack Street in Boston.
Welcome, sir.
My client is Thrive Pet Healthcare. They currently operate the Norwood Animal Hospital, and those quarters have proven impossible to work with. They're limited in the number of exam rooms they could have, the floor layout doesn't work. And so, they're looking to relocate to what is now a vacant space that was previously occupied by a bank at Manhattan Place. We're seeking a special permit to move these facilities there. Your zoning bylaw permits this by special permit in a GB zone, and as you know, for us to receive the permit, we have to show this will not have any adverse effects that overbalance, that beneficial effects for the neighborhood, the town. There are eight specific factors, which I think you just ran through with the previous gentleman, that I'll get to in a minute, but for an overview, I guess there's three things I'd like to make a point of. The, this is an existing space. There is no exterior construction. There's not going to be any demolition other than indoors, so there's not going to be any impact from that. There will be very moderate traffic generation, probably fewer than the bank generates. Currently, we estimate they have about 30 vehicle trips a day. They are hoping to expand where they might have 40 to 45 with new veterinarians. And finally, that this is a very popular and a necessary service to the people in Norwood. We took a look at our records, and they have had 26,768 clients, of which 10,796 are Norwood residents who have their pets treated there. And I think that demonstrates compliance with your first criteria, the social, economic, and community needs. This is quite beneficial to the people in Norwood. They could take their pets there if they need it. The other seven don't really apply when you're not doing construction. The circulation, all of the pathways at that strip mall are laid out there. Curve cuts there already. There's plenty of parking there, but none of that is going to change. With respect to utilities and other services, there's no unusual utility needs, other than any other business would use, electric, gas presumably. Environmental impacts are zero, as I said. There will be no exterior work at all. They're moving into a shell of a building that a bank previously used. Same with the land use compatibility. And with respect to the visual compatibility, the space is there. It's built, it's part of this mall. None of it is going to change. And with respect to the fiscal impacts, I think the community development director sent in a letter, there are a couple of empty storefronts in that mall, and this will fill the largest of them, which will have a beneficial impact on the value of the mall and therefore the taxability of the town. So with that said, I won't beat this to death. We are simply moving an existing business that has been in Norwood for years to a better location so they can function better, they can expand, and they can add a couple of doctors, so that people in Norwood and Walpole, they have the towns, won't have to wait a week to get an appointment. They'll be ample people there, there'll be more surgical dates, and we're asking you permission to permit, this by special permit. With me is Bethany Greenwood, who sort of runs the real estate for this company in Massachusetts. If you have any specific questions I can't answer, she's here, but other than that, I'll leave it in your hands.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Yep. Okay. Mary Kate? Anything?
Just a question from, for Sarah, if there was any way in from Board of Health on a vet clinic? I know there were other staff with a way in, but, okay.
Yeah, there's no comment anywhere.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Sheehan?
And is it the storefront that's all the way at the end, sort of where that you used to have like the drive-through space? So you only have...
So it's going to, yeah.
Got it. So there's only like another lesee on one side of the storefront and not the other?
Correct.
And I guess the only other question that I had would be, like, are these generally soundproofed at all? If you're sharing a wall with another tenant of the mall, is that something that's ever factored in?
So that is something I would actually rely on our business development team to work through, but I don't see a problem with them putting in any soundproofing.
Right.
I can't imagine that we wouldn't have it at any of our other locations that have other tenants right next door.
Got it. Yeah.
So it's clear, there is no boarding. There's no overnight pets. Any animals that are there have been sedated or are being treated, but they're all gone by the time the place closes.
No other questions?
No questions.
Al?
It's no drop-off and pickup using that old bank. Put the mutter in the machine.
No, the ATM is fine. It gives dog biscuits now.
I'll leave your cat there, please.
It's nice to see the space being utilized.
It's a much more convenient location for everybody.
Okay. We did receive a letter from Joe Collins, the Economic Development Director for the Town of Norwood. And official comments from Mr. Collins was, "For an economic development perspective, this special permit makes sense. Parcel 4-2B-1 is one of the few properties in and around Norwood Center with multiple vacant storefronts, allowing another useful aid to the property owner in filling a vacant storefront," and signed Mr. Collins. Okay. And we will, we will need to vote on some waivers, but we'll open the public hearing up first. Yes, go ahead.
One last thing.
Yeah.
Looking at the properties, every one of those storefronts here are at 111 Lennox.
Yeah.
Even though they have a different store number at the door.
Right.
But they're all...
Yeah. Yeah, I was just by there. The, the old GNC is 106, and then there's 108, and then when you get to 108, you get to 111, and all the way down, they're all 111.
Yep.
And I think Members Plus is a different number, too.
Yeah.
But there's like, to your point, there's four or five of them that list themselves as 111.
And they take mail, and the post office seems to...
To figure it out.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
Not my job.
Yeah. Right. Okay. Okay. Any elected or appointed officials here in GoToMeeting that would like to comment on this matter? Seeing none. Anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? Okay. Are you all set with us, sir?
I am. I did put together a little fact sheet on your decision criteria, and if it would help you write a decision, I can leave that.
No, we have it.
Oh, you have it?
We have the criteria, and you did a very good job hitting the point, so I appreciate that.
Thanks.
So that will save me from...
I'd like to thank Sarah for helping with this process.
Yeah. Sarah's great. That will help me. I won't have to read through the thing, because you already did that for me. So we do have to vote on two waivers. Obviously, it's a large parcel and involves multiple tenants, so they're requesting a waiver for the plot plan not be submitted, and also requesting on the floor plan. So is there a motion to allow the waivers for a plot plan and for a, just a floor plan, right, Sarah? Those are the two waivers, yes. So is there a motion to grant the waivers?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and I vote yes also, so the waivers are approved. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and go to deliberations?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Rachel. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? The attorney did a very good job explaining the criteria, so I think that has been covered sufficiently. What are the wishes of the board?
I would move to approve the application for the special permit to allow for a different use as presented in the application. Particularly given there's, you know, only one tenant on one side, it isn't really near any residential areas at all, it would just be for day treatments of the animals, and there does seem to be sufficient space both within the parking lot there and the parking lot across the street, I think, to probably absorb any additional traffic that might be coming in.
Yeah, I'm certainly in need of 10,000-something people. Okay. The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary Kate. Al, motion to approve? Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate? And the chairperson votes yes. Good luck and all the best. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. The next matter before us is case 23-1961 End of Cut, excuse me. The next case before us is case 23-2235 Kenwood Drive, 35 Kenwood Drive. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on July 25, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of Christopher Nichols regarding property located at 35 Kenwood Drive, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the single-residence zoning districts. This hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests to appeal a determination made by the billing inspector regarding noncompliance with zoning bylaw section 3.4.5.1, accessory trailers and major recreational equipment residential, and the placement of storage containers within the side and rear setbacks. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board, including a special permit permissible under 3.4.5.1. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing CPED@norwoodMA.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record?
Christopher Nichols, 35 Kenwood Drive, Norwood, Mass.
Welcome, sir.
Thanks for letting me speak. So there's been a pretty long chain of bad events that have happened to my family. At first, my dad died, and there was numerous properties in different counties, and while we were getting into that, we got hit with COVID, which sent the whole court system into spiral. Then my mom, who's been in a wheelchair for 22 years, I stayed on to cure her, and then she died because, due to my work, I work in the funeral business, and I brought COVID home to her, and I was her caregiver. So we were, after my dad passed away, started getting some things ready to be moved and out of there, and when she passed away, everything went its probing. So there were some unresolved issues where I'm at now, in Suffolk and Plymouth County, that have tied up the estate. So I'm asking the town to grant me a... When I went to the ZBA, your office and the building office, they told me I could ask for like 18 to 24 months. So I just wrote down 18, but I am so hopeful that it doesn't take anywhere near that amount of time to have this issue resolved. You know, if this happened tomorrow, I'd be thrilled. So if it's all right, I'd like to ask for 18 months, and hoping nowhere near that amount of time will be needed.
Okay. Thank you. So we're voting on the decision of the building commissioner, correct?
So the, the request came in as an appeal of the building commissioner's determination regarding section 3.4.5.1, which governs trailers, storage on residential property. That section does also give you the ability to issue a special permit, provided some conditions are met. This was advertised to give you the flexibility to do either, should that be the wish of the board, but this is an appeal. So your decision-making would be to uphold... So your, your decision-making would be to uphold or return the decision.
Turn over, yeah. So the Building Inspector is, and we have the letter on file, I know it's difficult to read, but it's, the decision from the Building Inspector dated May 31, 2023, requesting that the containers be removed or applied to the Board of Appeals. So right now, we can decide to allow the containers or uphold the decision of the Building Inspector. So that's what we're voting on, folks. So, Al?
How long have the containers been on your property?
One has been there since 2022, and that was when, just after my big dad passed, and then the second one, just a couple months on this other one, because I thought that the process with the courts was going to be kind of coming to a close, and I saw it for sale 10 houses away, where it had been located for 22 years. It was in 10 houses away, it was there for 22 years. So I thought, well, this is a sign, you know, so I bought that for the trust, so that would be used to load everything up in that house and donate it to St. Jude's, so.
So it's now empty?
Oh, it hasn't, I haven't put anything in it, no.
And why haven't you sold it?
What do you mean, sold what?
Talk about these trailers.
I just purchased a trailer to fill everything in the house when all the stuff is done with the courts, when everything's finished with the estate, then I can empty everything out, and it's all going to be donated to St. Jude's. My hands are kind of tied with the removal of anything in the property right now, that's why it's still sitting there.
But you bought these trailers back in 2022?
No, I rented one, and then I just recently purchased this other one so that I could load that up when I got the finalization from the courts.
And you have no idea what the court time is going to be?
Well, it's been, it's been long enough. I mean, I'm just at the end of my wits on with this stuff, to be honest. I got thrown into this, this wasn't anything I.
Is anybody challenging you for the property, for the stuff that's going in these trailers to go to St. Jude's?
No, no, no.
Nobody's challenging that?
No, no.
Then why don't you just donate it and get it off the property?
Because.
Get the blight out of the neighbor's eyes.
Yeah, well, I just doing everything the right way. I don't want to do everything on my own just because I can, I don't think that's right.
Are you the executor?
I'm the personal representative for both my father's estate and my mother's estate. Like you say, I don't, I cannot even imagine this going anywhere near 18 months. I mean, it's been long enough, everything's just a little.
So if we said six months, would that be?
That would be fine with me, sure.
Anything else, Al?
I, that's all I have.
Rachel?
First question for Sarah. It seems to me like, from the building commissioner's letter, that really the problem here is the setback. Is that the issue? Like, these would be allowed but for the setback encroachment?
There are two issues. One is the setback encroachment, and the other is the storage of materials.
Okay.
So that's why in the, the letter, and I agree, it's not particularly clear, there are, he listed three options to kind of remedy the violation. One was to remove the trailers altogether, the second was to empty them and pull them outside of the setbacks, and then the third was to appeal to you all. So if it were there, not in the setbacks, and empty, that could be considered in compliance with the bylaw.
Okay, the empty was not just for the purposes of making it easier to move. Got it, got it, okay.
Yep, so it just, if you look at 3.4.5, that's what it says.
Correct.
They're currently empty, the trailers?
One is, is not empty. One is about three quarters of the way full. That was when my mom wound up going into the hospital, so I stopped, and then when she passed away, it kind of went to the courts hands after that. Pretending to setbacks.
No, that's, you're good, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Rachel, anything else? I'll let you have a chance to speak at the end, sir.
Yeah, that's fine.
What, what is the current setback? That's part of my question. What is the current setback?
10 feet from the property line.
What is the existing? Where are they located? Because it seems like they're encroaching on that.
So I think my understanding is, after I went to the Board, the, the building department, that I was on a, where my, the property, my parents' property is on a corner, and the house is over here.
Sarah, I sent you a picture, did you get?
Where this is on a corner, I guess, which I didn't know, I did not know. If you're on a corner, they consider that property along the side of the house to be just like the front of the house, so you can't put anything there, which I didn't know.
But how far away is it from the property line?
Rachel, if you, if you want, I was there today, I took some pictures, so I sent them to Sarah, so she'll put them up here.
They're eight feet, one's eight feet off of the, that's eight feet off of the side and eight feet off of the back.
And then the other one is?
Does this one have the stuff in it right now?
Is this the one that has the?
That's empty, that's the one I just purchased a couple of months ago because it was right down, 10 houses away from me.
And that one there is right on, along the property lines, only a few feet off of it.
A few over, because there's no room to the left of that, which you can't see is the house, so there's only six feet to the house.
If I was living next door, I wouldn't want to come out and see that every day.
I know that, I wouldn't own it either, and I wouldn't want to get stuck in the situation I'm in about a minute.
Yeah, but, okay. So there's the second one there, and I presume that one's empty, right?
No, that's the one that's full. The first one, as I said, was the one that was empty.
And that's been there since 2022?
That is correct.
Okay.
At the end of 2022, because my mom died in February, so.
Um, what is involved with relocating these within the property? I'm just trying to figure out, how can we make some accommodation while minimizing the?
So on this side of the house, there's nothing that can really be done right here because there's not enough space between the building and the property line to the right. And the other one, which is basically, it's on the opposite side of the house, that one could actually be moved in, to meet the 10 feet from the property line off of the sidewalk side, but it's already, I think, it's either eight or 10 feet now from the back property line, I guess you would have to say that. I mean, I could take, have this one, my ultimate goal is just to get rid of both of them, I just don't, you know, I don't know, my hands are kind of tied. I guess I could transfer everything that's in this one into the other one and, and just wait until I get the okay to get it out of here.
And my last question is, from the, from the probate perspective, is it just that you can't dispose of the items, or is it really you cannot take them off the premises?
Yeah, you can't take them off the premise, can't really dispose of them, you know, no one's going to dispose of them, you're donating them.
Could you, could you relocate them to an off-site storage facility but retain control of them?
This one could be, I guess, this is through a company.
Or their contents, or the contents, not necessarily the storage containers, but relocate the contents to an off-site alternative storage facility, retain control and possession, and then dispose of them when the court allows you to dispose of the contents?
So what I could do is empty this one and put it on to the other one, and have it moved into the 10-foot perimeter of the property line so that it's not an issue for that lawn. Hopefully, it'll be soon. And that one could disappear, so go back to the company that owns it, but the other one is owned by the trust now, so would that be something that would be able to be considered?
I mean, that would be part of our deliberations.
Okay.
But if the, on that, if the issue is both the setback and the storage of materials, does continuing to store the materials but not encroaching on the setback solve the problem from the perspective?
The bylaw says, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I'll just, I'll read this here, just because we're splitting hairs on unboarding here. So this can be stored no closer to the front line than in front of the building unless the Board of Appeals grants a special permit where such location will not cause substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Such equipment may not be used for habitation, storage of materials, or any business purpose. So I would read that to mean you have a special permit to grant relief on the location of the trailers, but not necessarily the storage of materials and what's inside of them. That would be my, my interpretation, but certainly you're entitled to your own view of the language there.
That's helpful. Okay, where were we? Shannon, or Rachel?
No other questions, thank you.
Shannon?
No, I had questions that were similar to Ms. Churchill's of just the, the reason that they were still on the site, and it sounds like there, are there other ways to solve the problem of not being able to be, like, donate or sell the contents of these storage, like the home or your parents' materials, without having to store them in containers on the property?
Well, I'm hoping there's just a couple, within a couple of months, that this whole thing is going to be resolved, so the stuff can go, the house can go, and I can go back home.
Okay.
So if we were to approve an appeal or give a different timeframe, does that mean that if it wasn't met, then the proponent would be back in front? Like, say we said, okay, you're going to have 18 months to take care of this?
I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
But if we, if we decide three months, we can have them come back here in three months, but I think we're going to have some neighbors that want to speak here, so I don't think we want to commit to anything right now. Also, you got it?
Yep.
Yeah, Mary Kate?
I had very similar questions as well, so I'll sit, thank you.
Who's living in the house now?
I go back and forth between my house and the house.
So there's no one living there, right?
Yeah, I go back and forth between my.
Okay, there's no one living there. You go back and forth, I understand that, like, I go to work every day, okay? I get that. Why didn't you just leave the stuff in the house?
Because when my dad died, my mother was still alive. I was up there taking care of both of my parents. My father got very, very ill very, very quick, then passed away. My mom being in a wheelchair, I stayed on to take care of her, so that's why.
Okay, no, that didn't answer my question. Why didn't you just leave everything in the house?
Because we were starting to clear everything out.
And if, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
The clearing everything out process stalled because of the probate, probate process.
Well, my mom first, being coming very, very sick, and then because of the court, going into probate, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry for that.
No, no problem. Okay, thank you, sir. You can have a seat. Is there any elected or appointed officials that would go to meeting or hear that want to speak to that? Seeing none. Is anyone here like to speak to the matter, if you would, if you could approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please? Yes, please, just step up, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Mahorn, and I live on F-28 Kenwood, which is diagonal to Chris's house, and I look out any window in the front of my house, I see the white trailer. Seems to me it's been there about a year and a half. It's an eyesore. I think a year and a half should have been enough time to get rid of it or take it to a storage facility, but it's all I see from the front of my house.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Please just approach, ma'am, if you'd like to.
I am Jennifer Bolduc, I live at 57 Juniper, and I live across the street, so all I see is the larger one, the gray and black one. And, you know, we certainly feel terrible for Chris and his situation, but it has been several years since his mom has passed, and, you know, the other, the white one has been there, I think you're about right, a year and a half, and honestly, we almost died when we saw the other one delivered to the other side of the house, so now there's one on one side and one on the other side. And I think when you talk about the detriment to the neighborhood, how could I sell my house? You know, what would my value be if I asked a realtor? Now, we're stuck, you give 18 months, that's another 18 months, I can't do anything. I, we have lived in that neighborhood for 20 years, and I would beg to differ with no one living there because, Chris, you're there all the time. You're there at 2:00 in the morning, midnight, we see you when we go out and walk the dog. I'm, I have, I'm up at night with my child. You're there. So I don't know that no one living there is accurate.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
And appreciate your help.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on that matter? Yes, sir, yes, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Joan Davis, I live at 11 Kenwood. It is an eyesore. I thought they were doing construction work, I didn't realize he was storing things or going to store things. I think it's an eyesore, and it should be removed.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And what was your name again?
Joan Davis.
Joan Davis, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, just come up and state your name and address.
I'm at 65 Juniper, 65 Juniper.
And your name?
Maureen Meehan.
Maureen Meehan, okay, thank you.
And I live diagonal across from Chris, and I'm neighbor to Jennifer Bolduc, and it is an eyesore. It's horrible when you open your door and you've got to go out and you see these containers, and it's awful, you know? If I did want to sell my house, which I just lost my husband, I mean, a broker came in the house, and she said you'd have a hard time considering what's across the street. So it's horrible.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone to go to meeting that would like to comment on this matter? Google Meet, my apologies. Okay. Okay, Mr. Nichols, is it? Heard some of the comments, would you like to make any further comments to the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry for putting everyone into this position. Like I say, I didn't, I didn't wish for this at all, and so I'm doing the best I can, and I will see what more can be done to rectify this much sooner. It's really, and I apologize to you for even taking up your time, seriously. That's, that's all I really have.
All righty, thank you. So it's an eyesore. There isn't any if, and or buts about it, especially the one that's on the right-hand side that is hap-hazardly dropped there. So we, you know, we do have a few options, but, you know, reading the 3.4.5.1, Board of Appeals grants a special permit where such location will not cause substantial detriment to the neighborhood. It may not be used for habitation, storage of materials, or any business purpose. I, I think we've heard from the neighbors that is detrimental to the neighborhood, and that's, and I was there and saw it and took those pictures of it. Certainly, you have a situation that's difficult, but I would entertain or suggest to the board that we, the white trailer, yeah, go ahead.
You know, one of the things you talk about, he's got some stuff loaded, you go on that's empty. Some of these rental places, storage places, they'll take a container like that.
Right.
Rather than blighting the neighborhood, he can set it there and pay the storage fee there, and when he's ready to load them, get it back to his property and get it done and get it delivered. That is available. U-Haul has them, okay, the one at Walmart, they have that same storage availability. So it's something that can avoid the issues with the neighbors.
Yeah, I understand that, I just, without seeing what the probate order is, perhaps, and I don't know, that he might not be allowed to move it off-site in certain way, but what I was going to suggest is that the white trailer goes, everything goes back in the house in the white trailer, and then he pulls up that other trailer, and we just give him three months, 18 months, I didn't think six months is too long, and then it's upon him to, to.
Get moving.
Get moving, yeah, get, get, get his lawyer and get it settled, and or get a permission, as what Mr. Puro said, get permission from probate during that three-month period. If you need more time, get permission from probate to move it to an off-site facility. So that, that's. So that, that, that's, that's how I see this. I, I don't know where everybody else is, but I think that, that one, soon as you take the corner, you see this trailer and it's haphazardly placed there, it, it's off-centered, it looks awful, it's old, and to the neighbor's point, if you were to go to sell your house, also being a real estate broker, you know, we encourage people to fix their house up, it's what we call external obsolescence. You can't fix it because it's off your property, and that would significantly decrease the property value, so this is more detrimental to the neighborhood and does not meet the special permit criteria, or, as it says in here, I don't think we meet three-point-four, point-five, point-one, because it is the storage of materials, so that's where I'm at. So, go ahead, Al.
And as he said, as the personal representative, there's been no other rejections from the other beneficiaries, so the court should have no issue in allowing him to move it off to a rental property.
I would hope so, yeah, yeah. Rachel, any comments on it?
I think the only question on your suggestions is the one, the, the white one, the one that's owned, I think, would be relocated within the ten-foot.
No, the white one would go. That was the one that.
Yeah, maybe we can pick up the picture so that I can.
Yeah, the one on the left-hand side, and I know some people spoke against it, but there is a fence there, and, and it is set back off the road. It isn't, in my opinion, as I, as an eyesore, as, if you wanna go to the white one, as this one.
Okay, yeah.
Which is right on the property line. That fence corner there is only three feet off, and it's right out in the open, and that's the one I'm suggesting that the contents be removed, put back in the house or in that other trailer, removed, and that we give him three months, and if he's not in three months, he has to come back before us, and then we make a decision if we give him another extension or not, so that's what I'm suggesting.
And I think moving the remaining container within the setback so that we just have one.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't really know what's involved with that.
Yeah, it's only two feet, so.
Oh, two feet?
Yeah, it, so, I don't wanna add an expense, and I don't think, if you could go back to the other one, Sarah, I'm sorry. It, 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 moving it two feet in and two feet out is not gonna really make a big difference, and he would have to hire a, a ramp truck, I think, or a front-end loader and lift it and pull it, and there's, so I'm okay for a short period of time on that one, but that's where I'm at. So I don't know if anyone else has any other feelings on it.
I think it's a, a fair offer to be able to put out there. I think we're sensitive to the needs of both the applicant and the neighbors, given the detrimental feelings or detrimental impact to, the neighbors are expressing, but also understanding the sensitivity of the applicant's situation. I think, given the bylaw, we cannot allow the storage, and then I agree that two feet is, given the effort, level of effort that needs to move, move it would not, would be fine with that.
So under that scenario, then we're not issuing a special permit for anything? We're agreeing with the appeal modified, if you will? It would be like a, I'm trying to figure out exa, I understand, like, I don't think we should be granting a special permit because you can't store under the bylaw, and it's like within the setback, so I think that's now to the side, but I guess what would we be actually voting on? It would be.
It would be upholding the appeal. With some conditions.
With conditions.
And that's where you would set the three months, sound like?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree that not, without knowing the terms of the probate and knowing whether it's actually legally possible to move things off-site, it, it would seem a bit unfair to say that immediately things would have to be moved off-site, but if one of them is completely empty and it is a problem for the neighborhood, this seems like a fair first step to start to immediately address the neighbor's concerns, but also give the applicant some opportunity to make sure, see what he can and can't do, legally speaking.
What would be the time period provided for the removal of that one on the line?
We would vote on this so that we'd have to wait for the twenty days' appeal, and then after the twenty-day appeal period is over, that's when it has to be removed, correct? Yeah, so somebody can appeal this, and, but after the twenty-day passes, if there's no appeal, then he will have to immediately remove it, and he can begin that process during that twenty-day period. Al?
Mr. Chairman, just something, I got it correct. He said that the white trailer here is a rental, correct?
I believe so, that's a rental, correct, sir?
That's correct.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So that's a, it's an easy case.
You stop the rental here, pick up the rental and a lot off property, if you wanna do that, so it appears that they can satisfy some of the needs of the neighbors.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think three months is more than enough time, and then if it's still there in three months, he comes before us and then we can decide to have it removed altogether.
Force one officer, take care of it.
Or we can, listen, he's got some type of closure for us. Okay.
And I guess what is the mechanism by which we know whether or not the second container is gone within the three months? Is that something that?
Well, the.
The building department takes it.
Okay, got it, okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved by Rachel, seconded by Mary Kate, Mary Kate?
Excuse me, can I say something before you close?
Uh, yes, sir, please approach. They got us.
So it's, it sounds to me, it sounds to me like you're gonna let the brown one that's on the side of the house remain?
Well, that's what we're talking about, yes.
Why couldn't, why couldn't Mr., why couldn't Chris take the stuff that's in the white one and put it on his property in the brown one?
That's what we're suggesting, sir.
And getting rid of the white one.
That's what we're suggesting.
But does it, does that take ninety days?
Well, no, he, he won't have, well, we haven't voted yet, but what we're suggesting, and I think the board's in agreement, that if we pass this tonight, there's a twenty-day appeal period, at the end of the twenty days, that white trailer has to be removed from the property, and then the brown trailer that's all along the fence line, he's got three months.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem at all, sir.
Just to clarify.
Can I just ask one thing?
Yep.
The, the brown trailer, I know you say the fence and no detriment, that's all I see out my, my beautiful bay window. So, I mean, I understand that he may need some time, I don't understand how you can store materials in the brown trailer, since you've been saying all along you can't store materials.
Well, we're the zoning Board of Appeals, so when people come to us, it's an appeal to allow this to happen, so that's kind of what we do. We're trying to, we understand there's an issue here, we really can't dig into, you know, too much of the personal issues, we're trying to give them a very limited time to have that removed, and at the same time, hearing all of your concerns, and.
It's just, it's the entire summer, the entire rest of the summer into the fall. You know, we work so hard on our gardens and everything else.
Well, maybe a board member will suggest sixty days, you know, I'll leave that up to the board. Uh, you want to just clarify something?
I just wanna clarify for any potential conditions that the timelines are from the date of the issuance of the decision.
Right, yeah, okay, thank you. So the issuance of the decision, not the appeal period?
Um, yep, so three months in this case would begin upon the issuance of the decision.
Sign it, yeah, okay.
And as would that twenty-one days to remove the white trailer would begin, you know, starting on the issuance of the decision.
Okay. Okay, so we had a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed, I vote yes. So deliberations, now, we did hear before we closed the public hearing that some neighbors still had concern on the timeframe we were giving. We want to have a discussion on that. They want to limit it a little bit more, it's up to, what are your wishes?
The sooner the better.
Okay.
And I can live with forty-five days, sixty days, not necessarily three months after the appeal period.
Okay, it's not the appeal period, I was incorrect, it's the date of the issuance, so when Sarah types it up and I sign it, and Mary Lou Folon certifies it, which is usually, we're pretty.
Within one to two days.
Yeah, we're pretty good getting them out.
It'll be, maybe for one week with this.
Yeah, so it'll be in, say, two weeks at the, the front, so that would be August, beginning of August, and then if you're suggesting sixty days, it would be August to October, and then in October, if it's still there, we can have the building inspector go out there, and he would have the option again to, tell them to remove it, then he would have the option again to come here, and we can decide if we wanna give them more time.
Another way to look at it is, you know, this process and this request for this hearing has bought some time, and then with kind of the timelines of the issuance of the, of the opinion, the expiration of the appeal period, it's already been sixty-ish days. I mean, what was the date of this letter? This letter was from May thirty-first.
Right.
So.
There's been some time.
There's been time.
Sixty days, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not understanding, I mean, if all of these items came from the home, I don't understand why they can't go back into the home. I mean, being, you know, very sensitive to the extreme pressures that I'm sure the proponent is feeling with everything that's gone on with his family and what it's left him to have to handle and trying to navigate probate, I fully appreciate it's not easy, but I think the, the time period is baked in, even if we were to deny this request from the date that he's had notice from the building commissioner.
I think as well, hearing that there isn't someone living in the home full-time makes me, it does potentially open that up as an additional storage option that is onsite if we were to decide that the three-month period is too long, a period in both containers needed to go sooner, because someone isn't living there full-time, that potentially acts as a storage space in and of itself as well.
Yeah, great. Mary Kate?
I'm open to limiting the number of days as well. I think if you're looking at the one to two weeks for the decision, and then, as Al suggested, forty-five days or something.
Okay. Okay, so I'll just kind of recap and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to uphold the decision of the building inspector with the modification that the white trailer be removed, and what is the timeframe, if any? You, you know, we certainly can vote to remove both the trailers, or we can give the proponent a limited amount of time, so, you know, I guess I'll leave, what are your wishes, Al suggested, forty-five days? Is, is everyone comfortable with that, or?
Well, I guess if he has to empty the container that we want to be removed, shouldn't it just be emptied into the home as opposed to emptied into the other trailer?
Yeah, I, from what I heard, there's not a lot in there, so it could go into the home or it could go into the trailer.
And then the, the removal of the trailer would just be without storage of materials because he owns that trailer, and so it would take theoretically more time to dispose of it because it's not a rental?
So you, you want both of them to go? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think so. I mean, we've been thinking about sixty days, and kind of when you bake in the timeline of the, you know, this May thirty-first letter from the building commissioner, the time period to get to this hearing, we're already at almost sixty days, then we have the timeline for the issuance of the opinion to, in theory, uphold the decision in full of the building commissioner, and then you have the appeals period, we're looking at four months from the date that he's had notice. And if, if we're asking him to remove the trailer that is the one currently containing items, that have to be relocated, I think for efficiency purposes, it would be relocated into the home instead of the other trailer, and then, you know, do we need, does he need a couple of extra weeks beyond the appeal period just to dispose of an empty container because that's the one that's owned?
Okay. Do you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
Uh, move to uphold the decision of the building inspector, provided that the property owner will have, would it be three weeks from the date of the opinion, or?
Well, the, once the, his decision is certified by the town clerk's office, then the building inspector will take that decision and go down to the property and say these have to be removed.
Okay, so then three weeks from the date of the decision that the.
Do you wanna make it just thirty days? Just on simplicity?
Yeah, thirty, thirty days, thirty days.
Just to, to.
Yes.
In there. You don't necessarily, for enforcement actions.
Yeah.
You wouldn't need to specify that it would have to take place in twenty days because the appeal period that's provided by state law already kind of acts as that, that period of time where activity can't happen. So it would de facto be the twenty-first day would be the deadline for removal of the storage containers if you just upheld it with no condition.
Yeah, so let's, let's just.
If that's your intention, if you want to grant additional time beyond the twenty days of the appeal period, you know, then I would suggest, you know, incorporating that in, but if your intention is really just to have it be three weeks of the appeal period, then I don't think, I wouldn't recommend that you have to say anything at all. It's understood that action, enforcement action can't occur until after.
I guess my, my one hesitation with just having it be removal is that he does own it. He does need to find someone to take it somewhere, sell it, scrap it, something, which I suppose theoretically takes additional time.
Or to a company, in a flatbed.
Yeah.
We'll do it same date, next day.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, then I, I guess additional time wouldn't be necessary.
Okay, so your motion is to uphold the decision of the building inspector. Of the building inspector dated May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, with no modifications. Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Al, Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. So the decision of the building inspector has been upheld by the zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you, everyone.
So does the, the white one have to be on the property?
Well, the decision will be written in a couple of weeks, and then there is an appeal period, and then it'll be notified by the building inspector probably by, probably about a month, both of them now.
On the twenty-first day, the building department would have the ability to render enforcement action, which in this case could include fines or, you know, the other.
Yeah, no, I get that, but.
On the twenty-first day, the building department would have the ability.
On the twenty-first of August?
No, the twenty-first day after the issuance of the decision.
Usually.
Which is a written document that we issue within a week.
So they have this note, when I get that in the mail, it'll go from then?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I'll maybe have any questions.
Yeah, thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. The next hearing is Case twenty-three dash nineteen sixty-one Endicott, Blue Hills Impact Special Permit. Okay, notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM on the request of Mike Munoski on behalf of Blue Hills Impact Norwood Commerce Center, beginning property located at sixty-one Endicott Street, Norwood, Mass. zero-two-zero-six-two, in the manufacturing zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, two-seventy-five Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. zero-two-zero-six-two, and will be, also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit. This application requests a special permit for use under the zoning bylaw section three point one point five D six to operate a batting cage business under commercial recreation indoor use. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning board shall be considered by the board. Interested parties and recoveries to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the zoning board of the fields and may be requested by emailing C P E D at norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, eight A.M. to four P.M. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Michael Munowski. I am here on behalf of Impact Sports, hoping to open a hitting facility, softball and baseball, at sixty-one Endicott Street, which is the Winsmith Mills. This would work as a training facility for youth baseball, youth softball, high school athletes, college athletes. There's not too much around here. We've been looking for a while. Glad that we're at this point. The facility is, it would be about twenty-two by seventy-five, so there's a couple of cages that we can use. We can also open it up so that it's one larger area so that the, you know, whoever's coming in to train, it can be used for team activities, it can be used for camps, it can be used for clinics. I've been a high school coach or middle school and high school coach for about fifteen years. Before that, I've been running camps and clinics for youth baseball and softball. Started at the Pond in Norwood, a thousand years ago. And from there, I went to the New Orleans Sports Academy in Westwood, where I was their director of baseball and softball activities. Left there, went to Circle Change in Hyde Park. Since then, been renting out school gyms and finally decided to take the leap and lease something on my own. It's a big investment for me and my family and my wife, thank you, for, for allowing it. And, you know, it, it's, it's something I love doing. I love coaching. I love coaching kids. Like I said, I've been doing it a long time, almost twenty years I've been involved with youth sports. Been part of a lot of good teams, baseball and softball. I am the administrator for a USA softball summer tournament program, the Blue Hills Impact. I'm also the director of the post eighteen Legion, American Legion baseball team in Dedham. And in my free time, I am also the postmaster of Dedham. So I can answer all the questions about one eleven that you guys had about one eleven and how to make sure everybody gets their mail correctly from earlier tonight. So thank you again for having me here tonight and appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Al?
What building number is that?
Sixty-one Endicott Street.
That's the street address. What's the building number?
Thirty-four, thirty-four. So it's way in the back. It's a single freestanding building behind the big, big building in front.
Is that done by the K nine?
It is, yeah. If you were at the K nine, you would be, if you're at the front of the K nine, we're just off to the left. So before you turn the corner to, to exit the facility, that's where we'd be.
What are you doing for parking?
So there's plenty of parking out back. There's parking out front, there's parking far to the right, as you're coming in way to the left. We don't think parking is going to be much of an issue because, you know, if people are there for practice, the parents are going to leave. You know, they're not going to hang around. There's not a lot of room inside with the nets and the turfs that we're putting up. There's not going to be a lot of room for people to hang around, like moms and dads so much, especially for, you know, if you're there for an hour, hour and a half or two-hour practice. So they'd be, it'd really be working as a drop-off in most cases. I mean, they may hang around.
But you also have teams, you're saying?
We do, yeah, youth teams. I mean, we have teams, we're hoping to have a ten U team this year, twelve U, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, but we're also associated with Legion. You know, we'd like to get colleges in there, we'd like to get, you know, I know Carol from Norwood Softball has her own spot, but so I can't get Carol in here. But, yeah, it would be, again, unless, unless people wanted to be in their cars, there's not a lot of room to, to hang around inside by the, you know. Most of the girls aren't driving themselves. I'd say most of the boys aren't driving themselves either at that point, they're so young. They just don't have the licenses.
My concern is it's a manufacturing zone. And as my experience on planning board, when we did a lot of the rezoning, we held that out for the opportunity to do stuff. And now we're little by little waiving the, the use for manufacturing. And I'm just not a fan of it, giving up the space, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, Rachel?
To Al's point, it looks like this use is specifically indicated as permissible with planning, with board of appeals special permit. So this isn't a not permitted, it's permitted with approval by the Z B A. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It sounds like there's very little space. Is the entirety of the unit, like these two cages and then these end areas? Or are you just showing the cages themselves and there's some additional space?
So to the left, I believe, there, there's a little bit of a waiting area.
Yeah, door to common area.
Yes, yeah. So the door to the common area would be the back, so on the other side, I'm sorry. That's, yeah, so there's a little bit of, so that would be the back facing like the K nine place.
Okay.
You're looking at your sheet on the right. There is, there has to be a little room so that, you know, if, if one group's going out, one group's coming in, you know, that they have a place to wait. And there's a, a pillar in the middle that's as far back as we could go with the nets. And that's why, that would be all turfed and basically a, a waiting area for the next group to come in.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we've gone through, my other question is how do we distinguish this use for this particular location as opposed to the entirety of this address? Would be my only other comment that we can hash out.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Shannon?
And I guess, and I wonder if it gets to, by the, the suite thirty-four is included? Is that suite thirty-four that is just assigned to the area that you will be leasing? Or does suite thirty-four encompass like other parts of?
No, that's, that's.
That's just your?
It's a freestanding building, yes.
That's, that's just your space. So maybe that would be able to address that issue. I think, I, I can't remember if it was in your application or not, but I think you made mention of the idea of because there are other shops and businesses there, potentially parents who are killing time while their children are practicing or maybe, you know, bringing business to some of the existing businesses that are in the shop area. I have been over there on the weekends before and it is a little bit tight, at least in that front area with parking. Is there a lot of space? I haven't been down towards the K nine, sort of if you pass the main building on the right.
It's a big parking lot.
There's a bit, there's more parking in the back there.
There was a lot, yes, there's more than there is.
Great.
Yeah. And then if you, as you're pulling, you go to the left, there's a ton waiting out to the left. You'd have to, you know, if you dropped off and you wanted to wait down there, there, there would be room for that certainly.
Got it. And is this envisioned, I'm guessing if it's oriented toward kids, it's probably more evenings and weekends? And like summertimes, you're envisioning more programming?
Yeah, I would like the postal service to let me out of work a little bit early, so the goal would be to.
Put the hustle on the roof.
Tell them, yeah. Like five to nine in the afternoon and then on weekends.
And do we know how late businesses in the building are open to? I guess the arcade is maybe open until about that late now.
That sounds like fun. That's the arcade. I, I don't, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I think we got the arcade coming up next, so we can get that question answered. Yeah. Mary Kay?
No further questions.
Yeah. Well, being a Bay Booth coach, certainly there is a need, Al, right? We gotta, we gotta hit better, so we can beat Dedham.
Why, yes, we do, coach.
Yeah, we gotta hit better.
Are you Al the Bay Booth coach? You know, Dave Cruz, are you Al?
Not the Al.
Not the Al, okay, okay.
That was the old days.
Yeah, yeah. You familiar with Kevin Igo, our coach?
Sure.
Sure, Kev's a big support, would be a big supporter of this. I, I think there is a need, I did drive back there, there is a big parking lot in the back.
There, in addition.
It is tight, as you said, getting in there. And I had a conversation with Sarah today and kind of to what Al's point is, is, you know, the Moore Street facility, with Al, you were part of when you rezoned out and put the, put the overlay district on it and it's been very successful. And I know Sarah, from our conversations today, is trying to get with the owners of that to try to almost do the same thing and have those multiple uses, so.
They did a nice, nice master plan.
Yeah.
For eighty-four more's.
Yeah, and I think that's.
And they're filling it in.
Yeah, and I think that's what.
The town's working collaboratively with the ownership of this building to try to come up with some sort of master permitting that would foresee the general needs of the property where traffic and circulation, parking, lighting, you know, all of that could be considered, which is more challenging to do when you're looking at a subtenant by subtenant basis. So we, we actually have a meeting scheduled for later this week. So we are actively working with the owners and they've been very cooperative on that.
So hours of operation, you said, are?
I would say five in the, for the most part, five in the afternoon, probably till nine, nine-thirty at night by the time we walk up, clean up and get out of there.
And then Saturday?
Saturday, all day Saturday.
Seven to, seven to nine or seven to ten?
Not seven A.M., eight A.M.
Eight A.M. You're too kind to these kids.
That's why they're not hitting so good.
I'm not as young as I used to be, let me sleep a little.
What about summer clinics? Would, would that be in the daytime, anything like that?
So, okay, good point, yeah. So like school vacation weeks, maybe during the, you know, trying to maximize the space. It's not a big space, you know, it's not one of these big, huge facilities where you have cage after cage after cage. So we would have to maximize. So I have thought about doing summer camps, I've done, like vacation camps, I've done those before. So trying to maximize the space and summertime, I mean, we would hope, but again, it's why it's, you know, kind of a dying sport, nobody wants to be indoors in the summer.
Yes, but it's not a dying sport.
It is not, you're correct.
Yeah, but it's, kids are different today.
It's, yes.
Mr. Chair, I, I assume that like fire code and that type of thing would also just dictate, given the square footage of the space, how many participants could be in the space at a time?
Yeah, that'd be, you'd have to get a certificate of occupancy issued by the billing department and they would put a limit on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll ask if there's any elected appointed officials, see they're here or go to Google Meet, want to talk about this? Okay, anyone want to speak on this matter? Please approach the podium and your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly, Jody Smith, forty-seven Woodbine Road. My big concern, while I think it's great and we absolutely do need batting cages to help the kids, maybe get the Red Sox there too, so, they need our help, they can get.
Yeah, don't let me go.
The concern that the neighbors have is the traffic. There's Endicott Street, which is in and out. And then when Endicott Street is busy, they come up Holly Drive, they go right through the stop sign and go quite barreling up Woodbine Road. So we've got quite a few younger children in the neighborhood now, which is something that we did not have before, we were aging neighborhood. Sorry, neighbors, but we are aging. So, I mean, that, that is a concern. And that's a concern that we have about Winsmith anyway, right, right off the bat. You mentioned that you would be having teams down there. How many kids at any one time are you envisioning?
So, well, I'd say most of our teams are between twelve and thirteen. I think like Little League and Bay Booth, if you get a team in there, they might add a little bit more. So, I mean, what is the typical Bay Booth roster, maybe fifteen?
Twelve, thirteen right now in Norwood, yeah.
Okay, sure, yes.
So, I mean, conceivably, that's twelve, thirteen cars going down there. And like you mentioned, parents may drop them off and take off. So then you've got twelve to thirteen cars leaving, then you've got twelve to thirteen cars going back in for pickup and the same thing for when the kids go home. So that is a concern that we have. And the shops really are not open during the week. Right now, they're pretty much weekend. So there really isn't many places for those parents to go. So that's the only concern that I have. It certainly sounds like he's got a very good business plan. So that's just something that I think the town needs to start and deal with, access in and out of that, that area.
Now, so I just came in Endicott Street and then I know there's some residents to the left there. Is that where Holly?
Holly is the, is you're going down the street, the last street on the left.
Left, that's Holly.
And when you go up there, it goes into Laurel on the right, Woodbine on the left.
So people are.
They're coming right up Holly and.
They go right out, back to one A.
Go back to one A, yeah.
Yeah.
To avoid the congestion at Endicott and one A, they go around.
You're right out, yeah.
Yeah. Is that something we can condition the, yeah?
I mean, those are, those are public roadways. Really, what, what the zoning board and planning board from a zoning perspective can do is really kind of talk about traffic circulation within the property and then egress onto and off of the property from the public way.
Yeah, well, maybe we can ask the proponent, the applicant, to have signs put up that, that all of their visitors have to exit Endicott via Endicott.
Well, that's also an issue for those that are living on Endicott Street, to be perfectly honest. I mean, it's not.
Hello?
Please?
It's, it's not, it's not an easy, there isn't really an easy answer to this.
Right.
It's more of a concern. They can't access Davis Avenue as a, as an egress because that bridge, there's a bridge that goes over there that certainly I don't believe would hold a car at this point.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's an issue. I think it's the whole traffic pattern that really needs to be taken into consideration. So, I mean, I do support your batting cages. I think it's a great idea. I think we need it. There, I don't think there's any in the area, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Before I go to Google Meet, is there anyone else in the audience that's here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, was there someone on Google Meet that wanted to speak to this matter? If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Laurie Bergren and I live at seventy Endicott, which is Endicott Woods, the condominium complex in to the left of the mills. I have some of the same concerns in regards to the increase in traffic and the speeding on Endicott Street and also where we're going to go with this with the zoning and hours of operation. I think all of us past two years, it's seen a, a big increase in traffic and speeding, walking our dogs, walking with kids. I think it's a great opportunity in the business, but I'm very concerned with everything going on with the businesses, the cars and those things going on forward. So that's why I wanted to attend.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, did you have something?
Um, I do, and, and not that that's, is relative to any potential, potential, potential votes or condition. But I did want to share that for pedestrian safety in that neighborhood, which has been recognized as a concern, there are plans and funding secured for sidewalks on Endicott Street that should improve some pedestrian safety. I was in touch with the director of public works about that last week and we're hoping to see that project commence soon. And I would also say that in our discussions with the property generally, we'd be looking for, you know, potentially some type of infrastructure to support more pedestrian access to the site, bike racks, things of that nature, which doesn't capture all of the, the traffic certainly. But that concern has been recognized and it's going to be part of our discussions with the property owner.
Is there anyone else on Google Meet or here that wants to speak on this matter? Mr. Kowski, you heard some of the comments. Do you want to give the final say in this?
So I totally understand your concerns where we live in Dedham. You know, nobody likes traffic. Anybody who comes to Dedham, if you're going up East Street towards the, towards the Rotary Room, one-twenty-eight, totally understand it, I get it. You know, business is good. You know, bringing people into the community is good. You know, you have a, a really nice Norwood center that I travel to with the post office, go to the post office all the time. There's businesses there, even if the Winsmith Mills aren't open, there's businesses there that are going to benefit by extra people coming along. And if you're talking about, you know, again, it's, it's not a huge facility. I wish it was, I wish it was bigger. It only holds so much. You know, where I, I understand it, I, I don't think there's going to be a major difference in traffic. I, I wish that there would be, I just don't, I, I don't see it, you know, an additional twelve or thirteen cars. I don't know, not to downplay the traffic, because nobody likes traffic less than I do. But I, I just don't think it's big enough to cause, you know, the facility. But I, I just don't think it's big enough to cause, you know, the facility to have enough people in there to make a noticeable difference in terms of traffic, in my opinion. And again, Norwood Now, I'm not a member of Norwood Now, but some of my players, you know, come from Norwood and they send me the links on Norwood Now and the pictures, and it, it's been pretty positive in twenty twenty-three to get everybody to agree that, you know, today's a Tuesday, it would be difficult, but on Norwood Now, the comments from the people of Norwood, they all seem to, you know, support that we need something around here for the, you know, for kids to get out and, you know, get better at their craft and to be able to do more off-seasonal stuff, so, again, thank you so much, thank you everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and I, having six boys and been through Little League, Babe Ruth, high school baseball, and in one case, college baseball, but Little League and, and Babe Ruth are, there is, there is a lot of carpooling going. There is a lot of carpooling going, and there is definitely a need, a need for this, in my opinion, and it is a small, small, it's not very big, so.
Thank you.
I, uh, I'm a big fan, but, but of the wishes of the board, any comments at all on anything before we close the public hearing? I think certainly one of the things we can do is ask the proponent to post signs that all of his customers stay on Endicott Street, that's the main street there. There are, as Sarah commented, if we approve this, Sarah commented, there are some new sidewalks going in, and certainly whenever we get these traffic concerns the next morning, it'd be a DPW concern, the next morning from our meetings, I call the DPW director if it's a traffic concern. Tomorrow morning, I will call Chief Brooks and tell him these things came up at our meeting last night, and both Mark Ryan on the DPW side and Chief Brooks on the police side are very responsive when we make these calls. Certainly, it's going on now, you know, but, you know, maybe we can help you and limit some of that and, and maybe talk to Mark Ryan about possible signage that might be helpful to the neighborhood down there, and also possibly talk to Mark Ryan and the Board of Selectmen about some speed bumps on Endicott as you come out. But certainly, we'll pass those comments on.
I give you my word, everybody who comes in, I will tell them.
Yeah.
Whether they abide, but I give you my word, everybody who comes into the facility, I'll tell them.
It, it helps, it, it helps.
If it keeps even a couple of cars off the path, you totally understand.
Yeah, it helps, but, okay, so, what are the wishes of the board, do you wanna talk more, close the public hearing? Yeah, Al, go ahead.
Chairman, after listening to this gentleman speak, and, you know, getting back to the, they're only talking twenty-seven hundred square feet, twenty-six hundred ninety square feet.
Right.
Not a lot of real estate.
It's not.
It's away from the major flow of the businesses, there's all the shops.
Right.
That are in three-story building. And the time, I wasn't aware at the time from the information we got of what the, what the hours of operation were. Even the Saturday, Sunday don't bother me that much, to be honest with you, because that's when the other shops, businesses are actively working. And if you're only talking two batting cages for the bulk of the day, you're not talking a ton of cars, which was my concern initially.
Yeah, no, I, I tend to agree with you, yeah. Anyone, Shannon, Rachel?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Do we need to grant the waiver before or after?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, we can, we can grant the waivers now, but let's close the public hearing, then we'll grant the waiver. So motion has been made by Shannon to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Kate, Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
I vote yes, there are two waivers for the plot plan and the, um, what was the other waiver? I'm sorry?
Elevations.
Elevations, so, uh, a motion to grant the waivers.
So moved.
So moved by Mary Kate, seconded by Shannon, Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, okay, so we closed the public hearing, right? Did I close the public hearing? We did, okay, the public hearing is closed, uh, what are the wishes of the board?
I think that we have certainly heard concerns from the neighborhood, but I think that those concerns are probably about the site and the way it's functioning, generally speaking, and it sounds like, well, we're very lucky that the town is with us tonight, so it gets to hear them directly, and it sounds like there is conversations with the owners of the development in ways that improvements can be made and sort of like we can logically improve the site holistically now that there's more interest being generated in it. I think it is a pretty small square footage, I think it's great to get some extra use in there, especially at times during the week that maybe the shops aren't open as much, so maybe that's helping with some of the traffic through the neighborhood. So I would move to approve the special permit as permitted, specifically noting that it's Suite thirty-four of sixty-one Endicott Suite, to make sure that it stays with that particular unit, as opposed to sixty-one Endicott in its entirety, to allow for the indoor batting cage use.
Okay, well, motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded by Rachel. Just wanna comment on just the, the criterias, obviously the ones that, it definitely meets the community needs. There is any issue with the utilities, the environmental, the land use compatibility, we tend to see that area become like Moore Street, which I think is good, and it's set back with plenty of parking, the circulation of the traffic in the property is certainly okay, but we do, are going to add that, add that the proponent posts signs that people obey the, the laws, of driving laws and to use Endicott Street. And the hours seem to, evening hours, there's not a lot going on down there, so I don't think that, I think the Saturday and Sunday will be the big challenge, so, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the police and the DPW on that. So motion's been made and seconded, Al?
Yes.
To approve, yeah, Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes, good luck.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, so that one was approved. That goes here, the next case before us is case twenty-three, twenty-five, sixty-one Endicott Street, Hometown Arcade, special permit. I'll read the public notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing in July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM on the request of Matt Snow on behalf of Hometown Arcade, Norwood Commerce Center, Regatta Property, located at sixty-one Endicott Street, Norwood, Mass. zero-two-zero-six-two, in the Manufacturing Zoning District. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, two seventy-five Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. zero-two-zero-six-two, and will be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application retroactively requests a special permit for use under zoning bylaw section three point one point five B six to operate an arcade under the commercial recreation indoor use. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It may be requested by emailing C P E D in norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir, please approach and state your name and address for the record. Sure, Matt Snow, I live in Needham, fifty Sunset Road.
And you're here on behalf of?
Yeah, I'm here on behalf of Hometown Arcade, so just a little bit about Hometown Arcade. So we're a retro-style video game arcade, we have upwards of sixty kind of classic arcade games. We've also got pinball machines, skee ball, ice basketball, mobile hockey, things like that. We host a lot of birthday parties, it's been a pretty popular item for folks in the community. And, yeah, so this only kind of came to light just recently. We were issued our business permit and our amusement license by the Select Board. It was in either late April or early May, we were not aware that we needed a, you know, special permit as well, so that's, that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, clear, are we operating correct?
Yeah, we've been open since May twelfth.
Okay, and you received a license from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay, okay.
Just in terms of our hours too, and also answering the previous questions.
Yep.
Retail stores are typically open till five o'clock, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they close at five. And then our hours, so it's Monday through Thursday from twelve to nine, Friday and Saturday from ten to eleven, and then Sunday from ten to nine.
Thank you.
And those hours were set by the Select Board when they issued that operating license.
Okay, Mary Kate?
You addressed my main question briefly about the awareness of the issue and the need to resolve came about from receiving your permits from this select board?
Yes, it, it didn't come up until just recently that we needed this, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Shannon?
And so, and so you're the Leasee then, you're the person associated with the business, you're not associated with like the Winsmith Mills, like the larger?
No, no association with Winsmith Mills, just hometown.
Got it, okay, got it.
And, I mean, just, actually, am I allowed to speak still?
Yes, yeah, right.
So, I mean, just, you know, in terms of, you know, observations from, you know, traffic, just from my perspective, so a couple of things like that I've noticed, you know, just in terms of Endicott Street and the traffic, you know, for the businesses and Winsmith Mill, so folks seem to be very, very confused about how to exit the place, and they typically go out the wrong way into oncoming traffic. There's lots of signage, but apparently there needs to be more signage because we witness head-on collision almost every day practically. And then also, just based on being there fairly often, it seems like folks that are trying to get their dogs from the canine places in the back, they're typically the ones that are flying in and out. They typically hit the speed bumps there, going forty miles an hour, grab the dogs and then fly right out. So, you know, what we've seen is that, you know, folks that are looking for the retail stores or for the arcade, you know, they're typically going slow because they're not familiar with the area, but people that are there getting their dogs on a daily basis, they're the ones that are the biggest offenders in terms of the traffic issues.
Well, signage is bad there, so I went down there, I drove in, I actually went into your establishment there, and then I drove around the back, and then I, there was a back road to go out, is that the appropriate road to go out? Did I go out that?
Around the pond.
Yeah, around the pond, yeah, so that's the appropriate exit for the entire building, or?
For the entire building, yes, sir.
Yeah, but to your point, when I was driving down there, there was someone coming out while I was coming in.
Okay.
Because I, I think you're right, because I wasn't quite sure how to get out, and then I saw that sign and went around there.
Yeah, and just, just to add on a little bit too, just in terms of like sidewalks and just, you know, public safety, you know, in general, you know, a lot of folks from the surrounding neighborhoods do kind of walk their dogs around the pond and that type of thing. And I know Sarah mentioned, you know, that they're gonna work on putting in sidewalks on Endicott itself, but I think that just in terms of the facility itself, there needs to be better, like, I mean, there could be simple things, like if the cars didn't park, you know, if they, if they parked five feet back, there'd be plenty of room to like sort of have a sidewalk, instead of people just kind of.
Well, there's no, there's no markings.
Well, there's no markings, but there, there easily could be, I mean, it's more of an issue with, with the landlord of the building. But, you know, just in terms of public safety overall for, you know, that area and, and Endicott Street, there are some simple things that could be made to, that could, you know, have big, big, you know, improvements.
Okay, thank you. Shannon, do you still?
I mean, since you've been operating for a couple of months, have you, I guess, do you have most of your users coming in on the weekends? Like what kind of, like numbers are you seeing with your users?
Uh, yeah, weekends are definitely our busiest times, you know, summer vacation's been pretty good for us as well. We see a lot of working moms and dads kind of hang out in the back and use our Wi-Fi while the kids play games and things like that. But definitely weekends and like rainy days are our biggest, biggest times.
Nothing else?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, I see a note in our package from Joe Collins that the application had square feet blank, and then I saw a supplement to our materials of this plan. Am I reading this correctly, that it is four thousand two hundred twenty-two square feet, so that would be?
Yes, that's correct, yeah, that's from our architect that put that together. I think the square footage was even incorrect in some of the other filings that predate us being there, but that's the correct square footage, though.
And then I just flipped through your business plan, you know, thoughtfully put together. I was wondering if you've had any other experience kind of in this type of business, in other locations or anything like that?
Yeah, sure, so my background is in computer software, but I've been just kind of a big fan of video games and that type of thing. I've started and run a number of different software companies, but I've never run an arcade before. But so far, business is good, and, you know, I think it's just gonna kind of continue to improve as we get the word out there more as well.
So you just had like a inner passion and?
Yeah, yeah.
You've gone away from like office work to this new type of business?
Yeah, so I still have a day job, and this is, you know, kind of a side thing for me, but I have a good friend who's acting as our general manager, who's got a lot of experience in kind of the restaurant and hospitality industry, so he's sort of running it from a day-to-day perspective. And then, you know, just in terms of like how this kind of got started, I started restoring pinball machines during the pandemic and kind of evolved into this business.
And I'm curious what your lease says about permitted use. Presumably, you've worked through with the owner of the building and signed a lease for this specific purpose, so that was contemplated in your lease?
Um, yeah, my understanding is that the space, the, the building twenty-six A where we're located is that it was earmarked as retail and that, you know, they leased it to us kind of with the understanding that we would work to sort of get it changed to, you know, amusement and entertainment.
And am I right, that this is the, like, the prior remarkable clean-out building? Are you the entire build, I know it's like connected, but it's that entire building?
It's the entire building, it's, it's pretty much a freestanding building. I mean, twenty-six is technically divided up into two different spaces, but that's, that's where we're located, is twenty-six A.
And are you, oh, twenty-six A, okay. And did I have any other questions? I did not have any other questions right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanna comment on that, so you had said that when you signed the lease with the landlord, you understood that you'd have to get a use permit for this?
Yeah, but then when we talked to the Select Board, we were told that the use was only, you know, the amusement license, which we were issued from the Select Board. I don't know how this, I mean, we wanna make sure that we're fully compliant with all of the, you know, rules and regulations. Had it to do over again, we probably would have, you know, used an attorney to handle this whole process, but at the same time, attorneys bill out at four hundred dollars an hour and, and, you know, trying to do a lot of this on our own.
Did this come up at all at the Select Board meeting, about the use?
No, it, it didn't, it was, it was, it was passed.
And just commenting on, Rachel brought up the business plan. Correct me if I'm understanding this, your, your highlight is to achieve two hundred and fifty customers daily?
I think that, I think that might actually be, so the, the, the average number of customers, basically, that we're looking to achieve is a hundred per day. That might be a slightly outdated version, but a hundred customers per day is our target.
Where are you now, do you know?
We're roughly right on track for that.
No, but where are you exactly, in seventy, eighty, are you at a hundred now, or?
Uh, we're, we're pretty much at a hundred right now.
Every day, you get a hundred customers?
Um, the weekends are, are much, much busier, so it.
So that's the ba, the average for the week, you're saying, so Monday might be thirty, and then Sunday might be one fifty?
Is that what you're saying, okay, okay.
Al? Oh, Rachel, I'm sorry, were you all set?
Yeah, for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Al?
On that average of now two hundred or one hundred, where are we?
Uh, we're right around a hundred people per, per.
And how much do they each spend?
Our average customer spend right now. Our average customer spend right now is, so there's usually like groups of people, kind of one person paying, but typically it's, I believe our average spend right now is somewhere in the range of like sixty-five a person.
Per person?
Yeah, per, per payer of groups, if that makes, if that makes sense. So typically, like, there'll be like a family of four or five, and one person will be paying for the group of four or five. And so the.
So that's not your head count? Your four or five is your head count, not the one?
Yeah, you're right, sir. I don't, I don't have that exact number in terms of the breakdown of spend per customer. I just know the spend per paying party, basically. I could get that number if you needed, though.
What are you, what are you going to do if we, when we deny this? Go back to your landlord and tell him we thought it was in the lease?
Probably hire legal counsel if that were the case.
It's a great business plan, but it doesn't give you any indication of what you're really doing.
I don't understand the comment or question. Could you clarify that, please?
Well, you're, you're saying you're going to do a million two to a million four fifty-four, okay? With a fifty-three percent, forty-one to fifty-three percent net profit?
Yeah, we're on track for that, but I don't understand what our revenue estimates have to do with.
It has to do with the number of people that are using the facility, because that's my major concern, is the traffic. The number of people is the traffic, and that area can't handle it. So you heard that from the previous, and they were only going to be there from five o'clock till eight o'clock at night, or five o'clock to nine o'clock at night?
Yeah, so again, you know, there's a lot of people that carpool. It's typically, you know, big groups that come in in cars, so not many cars, and.
Ten percent, twenty percent, how many?
I don't have that number. I don't, I don't watch all the cars.
But you're using that as an example, but you don't, so you're making this up as you go along?
No, I don't think I am. I mean, I know the actual financial numbers of our, of our business, but.
But you don't know how many people?
No, I do know how many, how many people.
Well, how many people are there?
Again, the average per day is one hundred people per, per day. That's the average per, per day.
It's sixty-five hundred, sixty-five dollars each?
That, that's the average spend per customer. That doesn't take into account, actually, like things like birthday parties and group events and things like that.
I've heard enough, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we did get a letter, I know you apologize, that's also had some concerns on the batting cages from Tony Esco and Steve Esco of fourteen Endicott Street. I think we answered the questions in the batting cage, but are you seeking an alcohol beverage license there?
Uh, yes, sir, we are.
Okay. And then I'm just looking at these questions just so that they were asked here. Do any sixteen years and younger, do they have to be accompanied by an adult?
Yes, they do.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, is that pursuant to the license that you got from the Board of Selectmen? Is that where that requirement comes from?
No, those are just our own goals and kind of consistent with what other similar businesses are doing right now.
Okay, sorry for the.
Yeah, no, no problem at all, no, that's what we're here for. And are you serving food now? I know you said you have birthday parties and?
Uh, so we have a partnership with a food truck.
Okay.
And that's, that's basically how we're, we're serving food.
There's some big pretzel thing there.
Yeah, we do have, have pretzels. There's a very, in the next like week or two, there's going to be a food truck on, on site there permanently.
Just, do you have a Board of Health permit?
They're working on that, the food truck is.
Now they brought it to his attention.
Sorry?
I said, now that you brought it to his attention.
Yeah. But even for that, even for that, sir, even for that pretzel thing that you're selling yourself, you will need a permit from the Board of Health?
Yes, sir.
Just, I know you're trying to get all your permits in place. Okay, any other questions from the board before I open it up to the chair? Okay. Hi, is anyone here, like their appointed official at Go Google Meet, or in the audience, like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, anyone here? Yes, sir, you can have a seat, and sir, please step up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Sabardi. I live at twenty-one Holly Drive. And I was under the assumption that down in the factories, that you could only have an opening on weekends. How does he get a permit to open seven days a week?
That was issued by the Board of Selectmen.
But when it was initially presented, when we had committee meetings at the town hall, they said that only businesses were going to be there Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. And now they've turned it into seven days a week without notifying the neighborhoods? And also, I understand, according to the Norwood Record, that the Selectmen denied the liquor permit. So how can he keep asking for it?
Those two questions you asked, the hours are set by the Board of Selectmen, so they've already set the hours. In regards to the liquor license, they did deny it or table it, but he can obviously pursue it again with the Board of Selectmen, and they, they would be the granting authority in that regard.
So I would have to go to the Selectmen to find out why they changed the ruling on having places open seven days a week?
In regards to the hours?
Yes.
Well, they, they set the hours, yes, yeah.
But the initial agreement was only for weekends, for businesses.
I'm not sure what agreement that you're referring to, sir.
My wife was on the committee.
Okay.
That we had in the neighborhood.
Okay, maybe she can help, help me with this.
Well, Tony Esco and myself and a couple of the other neighbors.
Yeah.
We were told that they, they had to notify all the abiding residents on the neighborhood if they were going to be allowed to open longer hours, and then all of a sudden, we were told by one of my neighbors that they're open seven days a week, that it was, it was there, all of a sudden it's there, and we didn't know anything about it. We never got notified that, that they were going to be there. And they have a website, too. It says that they have a beer truck there that they can serve beer. We didn't know anything about that, and he's saying a hundred people a day, so that's a hundred more cars going in and out of Endicott, and we live on the corner of Endicott and Holly Drive. And people, I was out there Sunday on my swing, and people go flying down that street. There's no signs there, you know, back and forth with the factories and the townhouses. Like you said, they're talking about putting in sidewalks, so when that's going to happen? They were telling us that when they're putting up the townhouses, and that hasn't come about yet. So, and they're saying, like, on the website, it says twenty dollars a person, as long as you want to play, so they can, you know, so you got teenagers and all these other kids, if they're going to get a liquor license, they're going to be out there drinking, and my husband has to go out in our yard and pick up these nips of people to go and buy up and down drinking. So it's going to get even worse if they get a liquor license. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, thank you. On the, on the hours, they're set by the Selectmen, right?
For certain uses, yes. There was a decision of the ZBA in twenty eighteen, I want to say, when the mill shops very first began to have public-facing retail. So previously, there were, my understanding, you know, maker spaces, artists, whatever, manufacturing their own goods and selling them elsewhere. And at that time, the application was for sales to the public as a retail use, and there was a limitation set for certain days of the week to allow that retail use. But at the time, no other legal uses were, I think, being contemplated or considered, much like the Space Center and lots of these other kind of post-industrial facilities. They've expanded into a diversity of uses to kind of reflect the market, and so that wasn't the state of conditions at the time. So right now, my understanding, and I can certainly pull that special permit for you all to look at, and for anybody in the public as well, that sets a limitation on retail use. This is an indoor recreation use, so any limitations set there may not apply, but that would be, I think, for an attorney to come to a final conclusion on.
Yeah. And my other question, if we were to grant the use, could we as a board grant it, provided that no alcohol be served?
That's really within the scope of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, okay. Okay, is there anyone else here that wants to speak? Yes, ma'am, please, name and address again for the record.
Sure, Joey Smith, forty-seven Woodbine Road. I have the same concerns that the bodies have. I did go on the website, and I was really quite taken aback that there was a pop-up beer truck there. I do kind of watch the Selectmen meetings, and I didn't recall seeing anything about that being presented to the Board of Selectmen. Same issue is, is the traffic, and I agree with Marge, when they first started the construction on the townhouses, that previous owner of that property had promised, that goes back quite a few years, sidewalks all the way up Endicott Street, and they're still not there. So I don't necessarily have a whole lot of faith that that's going to happen anytime soon. You may have a, a different timeline, and if you, if you do, that would be great if that could be shared. They did do a grand opening. There was some very, very loud music. I'm on Woodbine, so it had to travel quite a distance, and even just this past weekend, there was some type of a pop-up flea market.
Right.
Is what I would call it.
Yes.
And the music there also was extremely loud. And I know that Marge went down and asked them to turn it down, and they did for two seconds, and then it went back up. And that's not on you, Mr. Snow, that's, that's just an aside. I'm a town meeting member. We have talked about the Moore Street and the zoning down there quite frequently. There has not been a lot brought to town meeting about Winsmith. So it would be great if we could have a conversation like that previous committee. I was not on that committee. I had other obligations at that point, but I think you need to involve the neighbors, and we are affected. Just because we're one street back, that doesn't mean that the neighbors on Laurel or down in the new townhouse area or on Holly or on Woodbine are not affected, because we are. So I would encourage some open communication and some open dialogue, but there are concerns. When you have an establishment that's going to be bringing in the average of a hundred, and it does say twenty dollars per pet, and so you just, it says twenty dollars unlimited, so I don't know what the sixty-five dollars was, but that's between you and him. So that's about all I have to say on this, but thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone else here that would like to address it? Okay. Mr. Snow, we always give the applicant the last word. If you would like to comment on any of the comments made by the people here, and also any comments made by the members of the board?
Yeah, I mean, just to comment on, you know, this past weekend and these pop-ups and stuff like that, that, that doesn't have anything to do with us. You know, we're, we try to be very respectful of the neighbors and the, you know, neighborhoods around. Certainly, if somebody asked us to turn music down, we would keep it down, so that, that doesn't have anything to do with us. I think that's all.
What about the beer truck?
Uh, the beer truck was actually set up by somebody, one of the other retail establishments. They had mentioned it to us, so I think we just put a message on the website. They were issued a one-day permit from the Select Board to, to, you know, have that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a question. What is the, like, fire safety capacity of your unit?
So it's, I believe it's two hundred people is the, is the fire safety capacity.
How did you get that number? Because the certificate of occupancy hasn't been issued yet.
I believe that, I don't remember where that's from, but that's the number that comes to mind. I might have to just double-check that. It's either two hundred or one hundred, one or the other.
I hold a construction supervisor's license, and I can tell you right now, it's not two hundred for the space that you have there and the business that you're running, so I think that's an important question that needs to be answered. And it wouldn't be, you wouldn't get that number until the billing inspector gave you a final certificate of occupancy, so, okay.
The architecture plan says two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two?
I didn't hear that.
Two eighty-two.
On A one hundred.
Where's that number from?
On the architectural.
It's on the A one hundred plan, floor plan.
So they probably did it standing, because with standing, I think it's every three feet, and they didn't do it sitting, but it's still a pretty big number, but.
Occupancy does change, as you know, Mr. Chair, based on the use.
Yeah.
So the occupancy for this former space as a retail space would be different from what your number will be when you get your certificate for the building use as place of assembly. Would be different if you were successful in obtaining that alcohol license, your occupancy number would be different, so that is highly variable on the use, and it's possible that.
Well, if you got the alcohol license over a hundred, it needs to be sprinkled. That's the, that's the state law.
Right.
But that number is just taking the shell, not taking in consideration all of the equipment that's on the floor. Two eighty-two would be a disaster there. Okay. Anybody have anything else for the opponent?
No.
Okay. I'm not sure where the board is, but I, as I always will tell you where I'm at, I have some concerns. This is very different than the batting cage that said twelve to thirteen people. In their own business plan, the number's since been adjusted from two fifty to a hundred customers a day. That's a lot, that's a lot. And I would like to see that ZBA decision in two thousand and eighteen, and I really think that your meeting you're having with the landlord, all of the comments tonight have to be incorporated into this, and the landlord has to get involved with this. So those are my concerns in, in what I would entertain. Is your meeting next week with the landlord?
No, it's this week.
This week, okay, so.
First of, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm just suggesting that we, I do want to read that two thousand and eighteen decision, so my suggestion would be that we table this, and, and Sarah can have that meeting and express all these concerns to the landlord. We can read that decision in two thousand and eighteen. The applicant can continue to operate as, as we table it, and then we can come back in a month, and that's where I'm at.
I'm just trying to clarify sort of like our jurisdiction versus like the Board of Selectmen jurisdiction, so we would just be saying a yes on the use, whereas they would be dictating things like hours of operation, access to a liquor license. But I suppose we were able to make our decision about use based on the size of the particular space that the tenant is looking to, like, obtain as well. And what you're saying, Mr. Chair, is that you are feeling that the batting cages, for example, was a smaller?
Yeah.
Space, and that would played into part of the decision-making on the use?
Yeah, going from twelve to a hundred's a lot, but I think on the use, we can, we can't get involved with the liquor license, but we certainly can set the hours if we wanted to, correct?
Only if they're intended to mitigate concerns about the finding criteria.
Right.
So for example, you may see businesses on Route One that abut residential properties, and a zoning decision might set a limit on when the sign has to turn off, right? Because that's a, that's a mitigating factor that allows it to be qualified for a special permit, right? It's not substantially more detrimental because we're mitigating that impact and having these lights turned off at such and such a time. So you do have to be able to make that direct connection between what you're requesting and the finding criteria, if it has to push it over the edge for qualifying for that special permit.
It's also a different situation when they haven't requested anything, and they've just done what they wanted.
I would also say, just to your point about kind of ongoing conversations, the outcome of discussions with property management would not be kind of a behind closed doors unilateral decision.
would not be kind of a behind-closed-doors unilateral decision. It would be very likely something close to like a master special permit or site plan review for the property, which would be more comprehensive. It would include, you know, everything for the site, envision a lot of these issues that are outside of any of the individual business's control. And that would be subject to a public process. That would be a hearing. It would be an open session with the board and members of the public who are affected by issues on that site would have the ability to participate. So that's kind of the intended outcome of these conversations. And, you know, I don't know that that would happen within the next month, so I just want to make sure you understand kind of where we're headed with that, hopefully.
Yeah, but I think, I want to read that decision, but I think then you can give us some insight after your meeting to say how your meeting went and where they're going with this project and what they're going to do about all the conditions, all the concerns from the neighbors, especially with the traffic and the signage and things. I mean, there's things I think they can do temporarily as you develop, I guess it would be an overlay district is...
No, it would be a special permit for the entire site.
The site, is that what more?
Most likely.
That's what Moore Street was, right?
That's what the Space Center operates under.
Using Space Center as an example, where there are already tenants operating in there before that special permit was set up? Because I know that's very specific about X number of square feet for this use. So was there a situation in there where businesses were already operating, and then the special permit was sort of placed on that and you were grandfathered in, or not?
It's a different circumstance, because the Space Center was really kind of renovated at one time, whereas I think the Commerce Center has operated in some form or another over a greater period of time since the manufacturing, you know, kind of departed the premises. And I don't know what the ideal outcome for this particular property would be. Every business, every property is unique. But I can tell you that for the Space Center, and it sounds like you remember their special permit. It's granted for the entire property. It sets forth a number of allowed uses that don't need to come back individually, you know, for these special permits where you're discussing things that are kind of property-wide and not really specific to that individual tenant. And it sets limits to try to foresee and control the impacts on traffic and circulation. So it says, of the available square feet at this property, so many can be utilized for retail, so many can be utilized for restaurants, so many can be utilized for... So that's kind of the general structure that seems to be working fairly efficiently over at the Space Center. If they have a request to expand one of those uses, they can come back and request a modification, which they have done even recently. So that is working efficiently. I think it could be considered a model for the Commerce Center. But again, I can't speak for the town generally. I can't speak for the property owners. But I think that could be a potential direction it would go in. I can assure that it would be a public process, no matter what that outcome would be.
I think that's what we need.
Just to Al's point, I am definitely appreciating that this is an asking for forgiveness rather than permission, which should never be easier. My impression from the proponents' statements is that it wasn't known, it wasn't intended, but maybe not a sufficient amount of homework was done. But it's still, you know, requesting retroactive approval for a zoning violation. So I just wanted to make that point as another, like, specific distinction against a very similar special permit that was granted earlier tonight for the same category of use.
I agree with you. Thank you, I agree. Okay, well, what are the wishes? So, we haven't closed the public hearing yet that way, so... If there's no further discussion, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Question, if there was a consideration to continue, we shouldn't close.
We shouldn't close it, very good, yep. So that's what was my suggestion. What are the feelings of the board?
I concur. Mr. Chair?
To table it, so I'll take that as a motion to table, leaving the public hearing open?
To continue.
To continue until, we don't have any room in August. That won't give us enough time. So when is ours? Will be our September meeting?
Next week, yeah. So the next meeting is...
And I guess continuing this, continuing the case, the business is still operating as it is currently, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're not shutting them down. We've got to get some more information. You know, my main concern is if there is 100 customers a day, that front area, there's not a lot of parking.
The next one is September 12.
So motion by Al to continue this meeting to September 12 at 7:00 PM at the Knott's Senior Center has been made. Is there a second?
Can I add one thing on to Mr. Chair? I'd like to see a floor plan of the rental book.
Okay.
In the lease.
I did include the floor plan in your packet. It was added afterwards, so you may not have gotten a copy.
Yeah, yeah, I had called, Sarah and I discussed that.
We don't typically request copies of leases for...
Yeah, yeah, not the lease. I don't think we request that, but the floor clear we can, so. And I think we do have it in our packet. It got added a little late after Sarah and I spoke today.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion has been made to table in September 12, 7:00 PM at the Knott's Senior Center. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rachel. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. So it's tabled to September 12, 2023, 7:00 PM, the Knott's Senior Center. Thank you, everyone. Couple of announcements before we get into the meeting minutes. The Board of Selectmen at their last meeting appointed Joanne Powell, who is ZBA Associate Member, to a four-year term. Appointed Daniel De Sodora, thank you, as an Associate Member for a three-year term, and Matt O'Neill as an Associate Member for a two-year term. So congratulations to those folks if they're watching. Thank you, everyone. And then we have meeting minutes. So I reviewed them. I wrote down, I didn't print them all, but I did review them. Is everyone prepared to vote on the meeting minutes? There's some, there's enough members here that voted on all of them, so we should be able to cover it. So are we ready to go on this meeting minutes? Okay. So a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 21, 2022. And that was us four with Ben. So Rachel, I don't think you were in that one.
Yeah, I, to the extent it can carry without me, I prefer to abstain on those.
Yep, yep, okay, so you'll, June 21, 2022, so you'll be abstaining. Ben was present then. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's moved by Mary Kate.
Second.
Seconded by Shannon, Al.
On the 21st, 2022. Okay, with one second.
Yep.
Yes, I approve.
Yes, Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. On the meeting minutes of August 2, 2022, again, Ben was here with us four. So is there a motion to approve the August 2, 2022? Rachel will be abstaining again.
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate, seconded by Shannon. Al?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
And I vote yes. On the September 13, 2022, Rachel, you were here for that one.
I was absent.
You were absent.
I was absent.
And Al was absent. It was Shannon, Sheen, and Rachel, so we can get a vote on the September 13, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Summer.
So moved. Rachel, you're second, yep. Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. On the October 25, 2022, it was all of us with the exception of Ben. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I had one comment on page three. And understanding it's a summary, the approval of, yeah, the approval for the middle school. I just thought it was materially relevant for my question on the express confirmation that the design was associated with the educational use and purpose of the property. You know, it's implied in the summary, but I thought that the express confirmation that I requested would be helpful.
Okay.
Given the Dover...
So can we amend that, so we can approve it as amended? Yep, so...
I was also absent for that meeting.
You were absent, okay. So it'll be us three again, and I think Al?
Al was out, it was Paul and Ben.
It was Paul and Ben. So the three of us were there. So motion by Rachel to approve as amended. And Sarah, you'll take care of that, okay? As amended?
Second.
Second, Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. On the May 9, 2023 minutes, Paul was here. I think Al was...
Out.
Out, yep, so...
Mr. Chair, one comment. On the top of page three, on motion one, I believe Shannon was the one to request seeing updated plans, not myself.
Okay.
If that matches your recollection.
Where on the top of page three?
Right here.
Oh, yes, that would, yeah, that aligns with the sentence that follows it as well.
Okay.
Can we correct that to read that it was Shannon? And Rachel, okay, so thank you for pointing that out. So a motion to approve the May 9 minutes as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate, seconded by Rachel. Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
And I vote yes. On June 6, Al was out, so he'll be abstaining. Paul was here.
No, I'm sorry, can we go back to the last one, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Motion one, close the public hearing. I don't believe that I had asked for update. Now that I'm looking at, I had moved to close the public hearing, which we ended up not going with. We ended up continuing that particular case.
The motion was not seconded.
Yeah.
Right, so I hadn't, actually, I didn't ask for the updated plans, mostly because I think I had been ready to...
So was that May 9?
Yeah.
That was May 9.
Okay, so why don't we rescind that vote, and we'll table that, Sarah, so we can...
Yeah, just to check.
Yeah, just to check it, so. A motion to rescind that vote on approval of the minutes for May 9?
Yes.
Yes, a second?
Second, yeah, made by Rachel, second by Shannon. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Right, so that's been rescinded, and we'll, Sarah will follow up on that one.
Yeah, and if you have specific edits ahead of time, feel free to send them my way before packets go out, and I can include them so you can all read over them ahead of time. I know it's hard to word Smith kind of in real time here, so...
Okay, and then June 6, Paul was here, and Al was not. So I think we can approve that if there's no changes. Entertain a motion. A motion made by Rachel to approve the June 6, seconded by Mary Kate. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. On June 21, which was Ben's last meeting. I think, Al, you were here for that one. So the June 21 minutes...
Do we already do the June 21? Is it 7/11 we need to do? Yeah, July 11, June 6.
Oh, we did June 6, okay. Okay, okay, thank you, yep. June 21, I don't know how I got that there.
There were two.
There was one for the...
Oh, 2022, yeah, okay, that's where I got it, yeah, okay.
So 6/6/23 we're doing now.
Right. We just did 6/6/23, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just did June 6. So the last one is July 11, 2023.
And I was not here.
And it was Ryan, Joanne, I think Mary Kate, Rachel, and me, right?
I was not present.
You were not here, so...
We have three of us.
Was Al here?
Yes.
Al, you were here for the July 11?
Yes.
Okay, yep, so if you had a chance to review, is there a motion to approve the July 11 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate, seconded by Al. Al?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. And now we're pretty much caught up on minutes, huh?
We are.
Yeah, just the common reculean effort, like, whoa.
Credit goes to Emily Manning. She's been doing fantastic work, kind of helping us get caught up and staying in love. So she's really picked up, I think, on the board's business, and I think that's reflected in her minutes.
Yeah, her minutes are very good, yeah.
Well done, Emily.
Well, yeah, Emily, thank you. Anything else before the board? And our next meeting is next Tuesday, August 1, here at the Knott's Senior Center in GoTo.
Same time, same place.
Same time, same place, yep. We're meeting a lot. Okay, if there's no other business before the board entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Made by Mary Kate, seconded by Shannon. Al?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mary Kate? And I vote yes also.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, NCM. And thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.